Glad to everybody find where they're going to be for the next four hours. Mr. Green, I believe, is on a Holy Land visit to Israel. And Posey is finishing up ballet practice. And we'll show up. And encourage everybody to try to go. Mr. Murphy, you're in there too, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else?
All right.
We can give a part of the call over.
Mr. Green. Mr. Lyatt.
Here.
Dr. Middlebrooks.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Posey. Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
If we could ask Park for the invitation. And Lyatt, you would handle the question.
Please join me in loving the solace for the victims of this school shooting. Heavenly Father, our hearts go out to the community of Parkland. We pray for the strength and healing of the days ahead. We ask that you keep the community here in Hoover safe and continue to bless its leaders and citizens as you have so abundantly in the past. Guide and protect our first responders each day as they serve the people of this great city. We pray for your wisdom and guidance upon this mayor and council in their decision-making. In your name we pray. Amen.
My allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for whose saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Notice we have members of the Girl Scout troop with us this evening. You want to stand and introduce yourself and tell us what you're working on.
Well, this is group 226 and group 687. It's two troops, all part of the Hoover Service Unit. And we're here today because we are, the girls are working hard on selling their Girl Scouts cookies around the communities and we want everyone to know about it and provide Girl Scout cookies. So we're going to accept the call this evening.
Very good. Good, I do see that very well. I guess y'all haven't been able to compete with that girl in Colorado.
No, not yet. Not yet.
Not in Alabama, anyway. All right. Shit, as a scout, I'd like to recognize this crowd too if not one. We're privileged to have Aiden Tacola and his father Mark. Aiden, would you please stand and be recognized? Aiden's with the troop that leads at Prince of Peace Catholic Church. Aiden, welcome. Glad to have you. Do you have any other scouts in the room? Seeing none. I guess first order of business is approval of the minutes. I'm open for a motion.
Mr. President, I'm moving for approval of the minutes without reading.
Second.
Motion and second. All fair to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to Aiden, aye. It's a have. Next in the reports section, Louise Baxley and those that perry staff members of the office of Senator Doug Jones.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Louis Baxley. Thank you, Mr. Counsel. My name is Louis Baxley. I'm the Economic Development Coordinator for the state for the office of Senator Doug Jones. I just wanted to come out and introduce myself to put a face with the office and as well as thank you all for everything you do for the city we love and the state that we love and just offer our services in any way we can help, whether or not just in economic development, but any other ways that you should be fit. Feel free to contact us here at our Birmingham office. Also go on, we have a website that's up and running. But that won't take up too much time on the reports and I know it's budget night, so I will leave it at that and thank y'all for everything and please let me know if we can give any assistance. Thanks.
You've left your contact information with Park or Mayor.
I did. Yes, you did.
Anybody have any questions? Louis Baxley. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your visit.
Next, Cindy Wade, Assistance League of Birmingham.
Good evening and thank you for having me. I am the chairman for our gala, which has an honoree who is your own John Lyatt. And we are very proud of John and that he is a member of our advisory board. The Assistance League does Operation School Bell whereby we rest 1,600 kids in 41 schools, costs about $89,000 to do that every year. Our gala is our one and only fundraising event. It will be held at the club on April the 5th. All of you are invited to buy a ticket or even better, sponsor John, sponsor the event. We would love to have your funds, your donations, and your enthusiasm to come to our event. We also have Prime Time Treasures, which is our retail store for senior citizens. It's a volunteer item that we have down in Homewood where we sell handmade crafts and we do Operation Literacy where we go into the schools and help kids read. John is not only a second year, a second term person on your chamber, oh, your, sorry, city council, he is also an operations manager of claims at Blue Cross School Shield. And John has been our advisor for a long time. He helps us in decisions and in funding organizations where funds are concerned. If you have any questions, we will have information for you. There will be a large poster like this that I will leave the city hall and I will be glad to get with the clerk to tell you how to buy a ticket or donate or become part of our event. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Lyatt, you getting some models ready?
I am indeed. I'm honored to be a part of the Assistance League of Birmingham and I'm very grateful, Cindy, Lynn, you guys, for the opportunity to be a part of this event, to be honored and we're going to have a lot of fun and we're going to raise a lot of money. Thank you for being here.
Oh, you're up. You want to talk about your tour of Hoover?
What?
About a tour of Hoover with $1,000 for water.
Everybody's in talk.
Oh, no, no, no. We got that. All right.
Not rubbing that.
Make sure you do what the left part was. Mr. Mayor, proclamation for the National Girl Scout Cookie Weekend.
I think she just got this.
She got it. She don't know that. I bet she picked it up.
You just mess up. I don't need to take it.
So you pick up the game. Saw you pick up all those papers.
Right. Yes, Georgia, would you bring your representatives down? National Girl Scout Cookie Weekend. We have a proclamation and we'd like Georgia Pearson and Penny Rose Pearson, Kristi Savannah. How do you pronounce that?
Miles.
Miles. Good to have you all. Thank you all for coming.
Whereas February 23rd through 25th, 2018 marks National Girl Scout Cookie Weekend 2018, celebrating all the fun and excitement Girl Scouts have had selling cookies for nearly its century, learning the five essential skills, goal setting, decision making, money management, people skills, and business ethics. And whereas throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl Scouting has inspired nearly 60 million girls and women with the highest ideals of character, conduct, and patriotism. Whereas through Girl Scouting, girls gain courage, confidence, and character to make their local communities and the world a better place. And whereas more than 2.7 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating the tradition of Girl Scout Cookies and National Girl Scout Cookie Weekend, now therefore I Frank V. Borcato, Mayor of the City of Hoover and the Hoover City Council do hereby applaud the commitment that Girl Scouting has made to America's girls and proudly proclaim the week, February 23rd through 25th, as National Girl Scout Cookie Weekend 2018.
Can you jump aside you? No, can't do it. What barrier? Yeah, don't worry. All right. Can you on three? One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, can I say something a little bit?
Yes.
Past councils who passed an anti-solicitation ordinance sought it to exclude scouting from door to door sales of like the cookies. Several very grumpy people have emailed me asking me about that, why did they're allowed to do that? But I'll, I'll say I think all of us are in favor of Girl Scouts selling cookie and cookies and I'm glad we just did that because y'all go sell cookies and don't worry about that, don't worry about that ordinance. Hopefully nobody gives you any trouble about it.
In a motor and trash holder. Mind if I, if you would note that Mr. Posey is out here. Mayor, proclamation with Heather Skaggs. Yes, Heather, would you come up? Heather and her husband Greg. Greg and parents Bill and Donna Jones, are y'all? You run your mom dead? Greg, y'all come up. You know, Heather's really becoming an institution in Hoover, Alabama. She chronicles everything that's gone and Bluff Park, River Chase, and we're so proud of everything that she has done and she captures the history of our city really from one end to the other. So we wanted to do something very special for her tonight in the form of a proclamation. So, Mr. Corley.
Whereas Heather Jones Skaggs is a lifelong resident of Hoover, Alabama, in the Bluff Park community. Whereas Heather Jones Skaggs was an active member of the Hoover High School Broadcasting and Journalism Department and later served as editor in chief of her college newspaper, The Jefferson State Pioneer. She also served as a writer and reporter of the Over the Mountain Journal and has many years of professional experience as an editor for the National Media Television Network. And whereas in 2006, Heather Jones Skaggs joined bluffparkal.org, Bluff Park, Alabama Community Website, to write about Bluff Park, its people, and its history. And whereas Heather Jones Skaggs' writings were noticed by Arcadia Publishing and who commissioned her to write three books about Hoover: Images of America Bluff Park, Images of America Hoover, and Images of Modern America River Chase. And whereas the historical value of these books have allowed people from all over the world to learn more about Hoover and its communities. And whereas Heather Jones Skaggs continues to be involved in writing about Hoover, promoting the Live, Love, Shop Bluff Park Project, involved with the Hoover Police Department's Neighborhood Watch Program, now therefore being hereby proclaimed by Mayor Frank V. Borcato and the Hoover City Council in regular meeting duly assembled and forum being present, sincere congratulations are extended to Heather Jones Skaggs for her outstanding accomplishments. Love from the City of Hoover for continued support of Hoover's history and success.
Can you shift that way so you're lined up? Okay.
Mayor, next, and it looks like we have proclamation from Coach Larry G. Grossman. Coach, would you come up? Coach Larry G. Grossman, his wife Karen, come up. You know, we have some great, great teachers, coaches in our school system. We all know and love, know the history of Coach Finley and what a leader he was and a mentor to our students, kids come back from year, grown adults now, come back years and years to talk about what a mentor he was. This is the caliber of person that we have here before us tonight. Coach Gino, just a wonderful man. I've known him a long, long time. He is just a very honorable person. He's the leader at Spain Park in terms of being the principal. He's an outstanding coach, mentor, and someone that truly needs to be recognized as a great leader in our city and I'm honored to know. And if our esteemed attorney would read the proclamation.
Whereas Larry G. Grossman started the Central Alabama Baseball Program from scratch in 1990, had 320 wins and numerous contributions to the association, leaving a lasting impact on the NJCAA. And whereas during his tenure, Coach G. Grossman was a three-time recipient of the Alabama Junior College Conference Coach of the Year, 1988 recipient of the Region 22 Coach of the Year. Whereas under his guidance, Central Alabama won three division titles and one conference championship. From 1993 to 1999, G. Grossman also served as the Director of Athletics in Central Alabama. For his efforts, Gino was inducted into the Alabama Baseball Coaches Association Hall of Fame in 2001. And whereas Larry G. Grossman's impact on the NJCAA baseball world was felt on a multitude of levels, G. Grossman served as the NJCAA Baseball Conference Chairman from 1992 to 1999, the NJCAA Membership Public Relations Chairman, NJCAA Coaches Association Vice President and President of the Coaches Association in 1999. Whereas Larry G. Grossman has also served as head coach of the NJCAA National Baseball Team in 1998. After serving as head coach of the University of Alabama in Birmingham from 1999 to 2006, G. Grossman entered the education sector. Whereas G. Grossman currently serves as Principal of Spain Park High School in Hoover, Alabama, where he currently resides with his wife Karen and have two children, Pete and Meredith, two grandchildren, Emily and Trish. Now therefore being hereby proclaimed by Mayor Frank V. Borcato and the Hoover City Council in regular meeting duly assembled, we hereby congratulate Coach Larry G. Grossman for his distinguished honor of being inducted into the NJCAA Baseball Hall of Fame. Just thank you today, February 2018.
Have you spent a few years around Barry in 1979? All right, next we have the reappointment of Roger Varner to the Personnel Review Board. Who brings the appointment? As the mayor, councilor, or city board?
This will be the mayor's reappointment, Mr. Varner. I called him and he's done a great job, passed terms that he served and we asked him to join us and he's great.
All right, good. I'll take a motion. And Lou Ferrigno's appointment?
Second.
Motion and second. All fair to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to Aiden, aye. It's a have. Thank you, Mr. Varner, if you're watching at home. Next, we have Resolution 577818, Mr. Corley.
This resolution adopts the Hoover Personnel Policy Procedure Manual as Exhibit A to this resolution.
President, I'm moving for approval of Resolution 577818.
A motion and second. Any comments from the council? I would like to say that unfortunately, as I stayed Thursday, I'm just not, my studies are pretty questionable. I personally like to have another two weeks to be able to go over it, but there's obviously
Mr. President, I'm still, is the email thing that I mentioned Thursday, does that change or is this still as Mr. President?
Mr. Shaw, your comments were completely agreeable and we're going to amend the email communication policy as you recommended. Mr. Posey just came with a follow-up on some questions, Mr. President, from Thursday. The social media policy needs to be readdressed. So what we'd like to do is excerpt that from what you have and address that in the second round. And we talked about doing this in two phases, the second phase being necessary because we have to wait until the results from the compensation and classification study and the draft is due back in March. We'd like to move forward with the first section, but we certainly will amend that policy subject to the wording that you provided Thursday. And we'd like to just excerpt the social media policy to have dialogue with all department heads. We have different departments handling that different ways. And then when you brought that to light on Thursday about what you'd like to see, we think that deserves some discussion.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. President, Thursday night, I had mentioned that I did not have a red line version of that document. However, we did receive one in February and I failed and overlooked that, so I did have it. Part of my statement that was accurate, I had not looked at it. So I am behind the curve on that. And I join you, Mr. Smith, and part of have a couple of weeks to continue to review that.
And we appreciate that. Thank you. Just as a reminder, in terms of procedure, and we want everybody to be comfortable, I mean, a lot of this, this is really just all housekeeping. There's some things, there's some compliance issues we need to get back in touch with and some things that have changed about the operation of the city that we need to be sure are reflected in the policies. We do have the president of the Employee Advisory Committee here tonight. If you have any questions for him, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them. But they had a committee that was appointed that has reviewed this with Mr. Lewis and also Mr. Mike Jackson, who's the attorney from the city attorney's office, who's worked specifically, this is his area of expertise, he's worked specifically with the city on this. So it is a good time. We certainly understand the need for more review, but it's a good time for questions if there are any questions.
Mr. President, can I ask a question to Mr. Rice? You mentioned in your last statement there was a draft due back in March. Is this, is this on the timeline? Is that what you're saying or no?
The draft of the Compensation Classification Study from Gallagher and.
Due back in March. Okay.
We anticipate receiving it in March, but that is not a contractual timeline with them. And that's one reason we want to go ahead and do round one of housekeeping for everything except issues that might be addressed in their study, so that if they're delayed in their work, we have this out of the way and then we only focus on classification and compensation issues.
Any other questions or comments? One quick comment, Mr. President. Mr. Rice, by continuing this, will this cause any heartache on your side as far as productivity or any issues on your end?
No, sir. We, we're just working from a schedule of issues to be sure that we keep things in a manageable flow of business. It won't disrupt the operation of the city at all. And again, we'd like for everybody to be very comfortable with it, with their vote on it. So certainly two weeks will not, will not be disrupted.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Lyatt, was that a motion to continue or just?
I have, yeah, but I would certainly be willing to do that. Dr. Middlebrooks, Mr. President, if you'll entertain an amended motion, I would amend my motion, Resolution 577818, to continue to call the chair.
Second.
All right, a motion and second. Any other comments from the council? Hearing none, everyone, all fair to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to Aiden, aye. It's a have. And since it's called the chair, I want to be able to reach out and say we'll put it on the next meeting.
Thank you. I was going to ask, would you consider that because Mr. Jackson has become special for this issue, but thank you for that.
Resolution 577918, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank V. Borcato to execute amendment to the humane care and disposal of animal service agreement with the Humane Society of Shelby County.
President, I'm moving for approval of Resolution 577918.
Second.
We have a motion and two seconds. Do we have anybody here from Shelby County? Come on down. And introduce your name. Got a few things I'd like to bring up.
I need to make a name out of the office in direction.
Address for Shelby?
My name is Bob DeCarlo. I'm president and board of directors of Shelby County.
And what's the address for this society?
31 McDowell Road.
31 McDowell Road. You get that? I'm flirting. All right, and that is, come down. All right. I had an opportunity to talk to your executive director, I believe, on Friday. I had many questions having to do with the number of animals that picked up in Hoover, how many are strays versus domesticated pets. And pleasantly surprised, I know that it's hard for you not to be a no-kill shelter with all the issues that go on in today's society, but you did lead me to understand that y'all do work with area rescue groups, that before you choose euthanasia, that y'all work to try to get these animals adopted out through these other agencies and organizations which may be feel better about, better about the whole, the whole.
Between adoption, transport to urgent state where they have security laws, rescues will wait, the only euthanasia decisions we make are based on health. There's still ones that we don't know for sure or limited, those we only have to care for and there will be prior announcements for them, but right now they don't.
One of the things, Mr. Mayor, I did talk with their executive director about is the possibility, and I don't know if there's anything with this year's budget, maybe next year's budget, to have a spay and neuter to Hoover, to where the city, and they say it's about $50 to do a spay or neuter, to where the city picked up 25, the citizens could pay 25, and we could maybe try to spay and neuter more animals, especially for people that find it hard to be able to financially secure that circuit themselves. Any questions or comments from the council?
Good job.
Mr. President, if I could just say, we know that spay and neuter is the answer to the question. We have the data all around the United States that the communities that adopt spay and neuter, their intake drops like a rock. And so that's the solution to the problem. And we also have certificates for a very low-cost spay and neuter or a zero-cost spay and neuter. So if we could ever get that somewhere, somehow in Shelby County, that's our commercial to you. And we haven't euthanized for space in a number of years, since I've been on the board, which is over seven years. And if we could ever get that, we could show to the rest of the county and to the community what spay and neuter really does to save animals. Thank you.
Anything else? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, hearing none, I'm all fair to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to Aiden, aye. It's a have. Thank you all. Next, is Resolution 57818, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank V. Borcato to execute a planning and engineering services agreement with SANS Associates in preparation of new subdivision regulations to the city.
President, I'm moving for approval of Resolution 57818.
Second.
Motion and second. Any comments or questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. President, I may, you know, I've looked at this and thought about this a lot over the weekend and talked with a lot of folks in planning and zoning. And this is difficult for me to say because I have tremendous respect for Mac and, in your short time here, we've worked through a lot of things and some big resoning things. But in the folks I talked to in planning and zoning, we couldn't, I wasn't able to find, I wasn't able to get my hands around exactly where our problems are. And these are, these are folks that have proved a lot, applied approvals on a lot of different subdivision approvals. And I just come to the conclusion that I think we're putting the cart before the horse to spend, 47 just shot $50,000 on a consulting firm. We haven't even looked at it in planning and zoning. We haven't looked at a bullet list or a short list of some of these issues that were brought up with the roads. up with the roads, with the, any kind of shortcomings or ambiguities or conflicts and things like that. So, you know, look at the, it looks like in a little bit, we're going to be looking at funding for SROs. And I just can't see approving forty-seven thousand dollars for something like this yet. Certainly something that we can, in my opinion, look at in planning and zoning. We can do a shortlist, we can do a punch list and see how far we get. If we run into trouble or we start getting in the weeds, then we call in, call in a firm like this. But nobody in planning and zoning was familiar with this. Nobody, I haven't been able to find anybody who thinks that we're ready to do this yet. I think we should make our first effort at doing this on our own before we spend this money or a firm to do it. My findings, in my opinion.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
Mr. President, Al, we exchanged emails today and I mentioned that looking at the way other cities do this, there are some cities that do take the approach of hiring outside the firm. They lost in Texas, certainly took that some approach, but there's others that do it in-house. And it really depends on the severity, I guess, of the issue. Now, we know that this has been something that we had with pets in nineteen seventy-eight and a lot of other cities, our neighboring cities, we're talking two thousand ten, two thousand thirteen, that they've looked at it. So I do agree with Councilman Shaw that maybe if we spend more time looking at it would be a good thing and that we decide where to focus. I know it's something that really is pressing. We've got to, we stand a chance right now of a person coming in and building something to those, to that code. And right now, we've had a good partner, if not. But looking at kind of the landscape now, I do agree with Mike that maybe that money is better spent with the SROs and it's weighted a little bit and maybe look at it with planning and zoning with smaller people. That is, that is what everybody usually agrees on.
Sure. I can answer a little bit of that, if that's, if this are my time, Mr. President. So in terms of funding, this funding is already allocated. So you guys have allocated this in a prior budget amendment. It would not be in competition with the pending budget amendment, budget amendment item. And when we get to that, I've got some comments about where we think that money can come from, from within the existing budget. So we really don't have a funding conflict in terms of the fact that this money is already actually, I think it's fifty thousand dollars, is already prepositioned. What we're just talking about now is the contract to go ahead and do the work. There are several issues, Mr. Shaw, and I don't, I'm not going to read you this, but just to give you a quick thought process from the staff about why this is necessary. As you mentioned, Mr. Posey's really never had a holistic look since the nineteen seventies. I think we'd all agree, it was changed a little bit since the late nineteen seventies and it's time to take a peek at it. We're not consistent in several areas with case law and state law, so we want to reduce the city's legal exposure. We need to reorganize and reformat the document, pull it out of the zoning ordinance and create its own document. That's for clarity for two groups of people. Certainly for city staff that deals with it daily, but also for the development community. And there were some comments Thursday night about one of our developers who does a tremendous amount of work, and I reached out to them on Friday, spoke to them, and they, they support this. They feel like this would make their life easier, their projects go faster. Actually, Mr. Latt, I stole your line about the awards that they wanted to have, that does some fantastic work in the city. And I said, would this impede or promote that caliber of development? And the answer was, it would promote it. And I asked for the technical background on that. Basically, they have come with additional options, new designs, new street widths, things that they like to do and a different development product in Hoover. And the quote was, and the staff, doing what they have to do, has had to tell us no, because our current subdivision regulations don't allow what that particular, now this is a developer that traditionally goes way above and beyond and is a good partner, but they choose to exceed the minimum. And they're just one, and they do a majority of work in the city, but they're just one developer. We have others that don't make that choice. And so we'd like to raise the bar for everybody. So putting it in its own document would be helpful. You mentioned road buildup. That's something that, again, a couple of major developers are doing by choice so that when they then dedicate private roads to us, those roads are better positioned, weather the test of time. But we can't make them do that. That's a, that's a case by case situation. Update our tree and landscape requirements. We all see a lot of conversation about the tree ordinance. Anytime there's a newly approved government in Hoover, obviously that's a topic of discussion. This would make some improvements there. It would require the landscape plan as part of the preliminary plat. That's kind of a procedural thing, but that way we could ensure that there was going to be compliance with the tree ordinance on the front end of the project and answer a lot of public comments and questions early, rather than kind of giving the public assurance that, yeah, it will come in before the project's over, et cetera. Update our stormwater standards. I don't think we need to talk about issue. We've got pending stormwater work coming to you guys in the next few weeks. I think we're all familiar with what that's about. Fire department has asked if we incorporate some hydrant specifications and consistent location standards. Right now, a developer can come in, maybe somebody who doesn't do a lot of work in Hoover or is kind of trying to get ahead of the game, and they can throw some fire hydrants in. And then in some cases, we've had to go back and cajole them to put in fire hydrants that actually work with our fire hose and are in the location that we need them to be. This would move that to the front of the process so that those types of miscommunications didn't occur. Matching up our regulations with latest industry standard in practice, again, something that's supported by the development community. And then our street lighting standards, as we all push forward to a more pedestrian-friendly design, again, we see some builders doing excellent job with that and they're doing the right things with lighting. We just implemented planning and zoning, the sidewalk requirement, but we didn't have the ability to implement the lighting improvements that need to go along with making that a pedestrian-friendly environment. So now we run the risk of requiring people to build some sidewalks that people don't want to walk on at night because it's not a lit area. So these are some of the things that we've discussed. Certainly, we're willing to have as much dialogue and conversation as we need to have. Some of the cities that have addressed this have done so with input. And, you know, I think everything we've done has been, has followed that model. So I also asked some of the developers in my conversations Friday if they'd be willing to sit on an advisory group. And we need representation from P and Z and the development community. And that would be instrumental part of this rewrite to give the engineering firm the ability to have our stuff to go into that, just reflected from Hoover people. Not naming the city, one, one city that was listed as having used a committee actually contracted to the Regional Planning Commission. That was a hundred thousand dollar effort and they do a lot less development than we do. So economy of scale, we think we're in pretty good shape in terms of the money that we're asking to allocate this. I hope that's helpful, some of the things from Thursday night or some of Mr. Shaw's concerns tonight. And I'm obviously available for any other questions.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'm Mr. Rice. Can you just define to me what qualifies as a subdivision?
I'll defer to the city plan.
For what qualifies as a subdivision?
All right, you basically have two different types of subdivisions. And basically, one is what we consider developmental subdivision, where you're taking pieces of property, subdividing that into smaller pieces of property and actually adding public infrastructure to that development. So generally, those are going to be, you're going to see more lots associated with a developmental type subdivision. And our subdivision regulations lay out the process, not just for having that grown up in platform at and construction drawings that go along with the preliminary plat, but also guidance on the improvements that are required for that type of subdivision. And then we, we have others, which I would consider minor subdivisions in nature, where you're simply taking a piece of property and cutting it up multiple ways. And those cases don't require additional infrastructure to service the subdivision. So that's, that's roughly how I break it up, the developmental subdivision versus a minor subdivision that would go straight to final plat, just taking one piece of property, dividing it into multiple pieces of property.
There's no minimum lots required to make this subdivision versus just ambiguities?
If you're, if you're taking one lot and breaking it up into two, that's considered a subdivision. And in some cases, we'll even have replats of a singular piece of property. There've been a couple of those that come up where you'll have an easement or something that needs to be vacated and we'll go through the process of replating that singular property. But it really comes down to whether or not we need to go through the preliminary plat process and have improvements made, comes down to whether or not that's a developmental subdivision. And there's a need in addition to carving up property to have infrastructure put into place to serve it.
Thank you, man.
Mr. President, something quick. Nineteen seventy-eight is a long time. I think the Gallerio was built in eighty.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six. I'm a big fan of being updated with codes and making sure we have the data on our regulations, meaning, I commend our fire department, for instance. They can do a really good job and make sure we're up to the latest standards of the International Building and Fire Code. Some municipalities are working off ten-year-old codes. That can affect multiple things, such as fire protection. You have multiple homes on a particular street and the fire gallons per minute, they put out a fire, is below a certain standard. That matters a lot. So I commend our fire department to stand up on our fire code, our building code when it comes to ADA accessibility. All those things kind of matter in the whole scheme of things where you run a city out and making sure at least you have it occurred and seeing what federal regulations are to come down the road. This particular thing, correct me if I'm wrong, this is an actual study. It will have to come back before it to actually be approved, right? If anything is changed in regulation.
Subregs, go to council or just be in the planning and zoning.
Playing commission has final approval.
So, so, right, so, but it does come to, back to a particular body for approval. So it's really just a study evaluation of what is going on. Now, again, nineteen seventy-eight, roughly forty years ago, is a long period of time and the way things are working with technology, the way we're moving things forward, three years down the road is adequate in many cases if we let it get ahead of us. So that's my comment. I'm fully supportive of doing things when we have a large city, six largest city and state out there.
Mr. Murphy, we did always envision this traveling hand in glove with a comprehensive plan. I think you all are aware of where we are on that. We've had the public input meetings, that's being compiled. The, I'll put a plug in for the survey. The online survey closes out at the end of February. We're getting a good response rate to the online survey. So as that work begins to taper off, we were kind of strategically wanting to ramp this up because a lot of this will contain the implementation of what we learn in our comp plan development, if that makes sense. These are complementary efforts, comprehensive plan and then subdivision regulation.
Any other questions from the council?
Mr. President, I can follow up real quick. All right, so you mentioned roads, trees, stormwater, hydropower, street lighting, and those are all valid things. I guess, first question I have for us, how many folks up here have been on planning and zoning before? Were you all aware of any problems with these or did you have to work through, did you have some plat approval? In a year and a half, I'm a short timer on this so far, but something, if there was a, if there was a hybrid problem, I mean, if we have a regulation problem that potentially leads to safety, I mean, that should be on the agenda next, next month. We should be talking about that now. Other things, what's that?
It's on there tonight.
What's that?
It's on there tonight. Although we can proceed.
Well, sort of. We should be on the planning and zoning agenda next month. Things like trees and, and street lighting, I can't see how that wouldn't be derived from a comprehensive plan effort. And that goes to what Dr. Middlebrook's mentioned on Thursday. So like I said, timing, I don't see why we're not tackling these things, why it's taken, why does it take this effort after decades to address these things that they've been going on? So I still don't see spending this money at this point. I know we proofed the budget, allocated the funds for it, but at that point, we didn't have that, that discussion of what this is. And I think we can still revisit that at any time when we're talking about spending fifty grand. So anyway, that, that's my follow-up to those points. I think they're all great points. And again, all things to do with respect to Mac, I think we're just putting the cart before we'll say this one.
Right. We, I, I think one of the reasons we don't see them so much at P and Z, and I'm like you, I've been on the same length of time you have, so I don't speak from some thirty year, you know, basic experience. But I think the reason we don't see a lot is the staff has to catch them and deal with them. And what happens is, probably using the examples of the fire hydrants is a good one, they have to return those documents back to the developer and say, you're not ready yet, you can't come yet. In some cases, physically, you have to pull those out after plat approvals have been through P and Z and they've gone to work. You got to remove those and put them in with a different type that we're compatible with. That's an extreme example. In most cases, what happens is staff catches this and it has to be turned around and sent back to the developer. We just don't have a consolidated script to work from that's common between our engineering and development staff and our development community. So, and in terms of the timing, remember, we're not writing it tonight. All this is, is approving the next step of the process to begin writing it. It absolutely has to flow and be derived from the comp plan. So as the comp plan begins to sunset and it's development, we felt like this was a good time to ramp this up.
Mr. Martin, I ran across a document and unfortunately, I was pushing to get out of the office to be here on time and I left it on the shelf where I placed it to try to remember it. In two thousand and nine, I'm trying to recall, do you know if there were any zoning changes in two thousand and nine or would that have been a subdivision adjustment?
Hmm, difficult for me to say. That was before my time.
I didn't know during your studies for all this, that maybe you crossed that and she gave the other.
There have been some updates to subregs. We started out with the, I guess, the nineteen seventy-eight base, these old Jefferson County regulations. There've been some layers added to that piece meal over time, but never a comprehensive study.
Whatever it is, I will try to give that up to Mr. Rice. For, for me, it is coming down to the dollars. We're in position right now to where we've had a hiring freeze, we've kind of traveled outside the state of Alabama for all city employees, that's mission critical. Somebody told me not too long ago, if you can handle the tens of thousands, the hundreds of thousands, they'll take care of themselves. I would like to note that self-proclaimed President Emeritus Jack Wright just joined us along with his wife and dad. And, and I told the mayor a little earlier today that I think it's a well-deserved issue, but it is the timing, right? Because of financial issues at this time. Anything on the audience?
Mr. President, I have a couple more questions. I don't. I don't think this is a matter, any regulation that's two years younger than me needs to be evaluated. And I do, I do know that all of our neighbors do have this pulled out as a separate document and that can be amended more heavily and would be amended probably on a three-year cycle rather than this four-year cycle. For me, the fear is unknown of what we have when someone comes and does not do what our partner development here do and wants to build something and can point at your law and say, well, your law says that this is possible. That is, that is scary. We have been able to somehow circumvent that for a while and I guess that's another question for the day, is how we've done that.
I think, in reference, I think we've done some stuff that we would, we would have rather had been done differently, but it had to be allowed.
If we do this, and you're talking about forming this group that sits, that sits outside, that is of stakeholders that would help in this reprocess, I would like to see that group stay around and like to see that group look at amendments and the time of the map. Because we certainly do not want to look at spending forty thousand dollars again in another few years when this changes again, this will continue to change. I want to do it right and I want to maintain that correction perpetually and not have to do this again.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Much like you were with the revisions to the personnel policy. I've been on the fence on this one for a while and, you know, maybe I didn't do the legwork like, like I should have, but I continue to be on the fence on this question. I would like a little more time to talk it over with, with Mac and the other city staff on the need, that need for this. So I am motioning for continuance of Resolution 5780-18.
Well, Mr. Attorney, we had a motion already on the table. Can a motion to continue supersede that motion? You guys have a part of a second. All right. So we have a motion to continue. We have a second. Is this debatable? Okay, should we move without discussion? Do you need to go ahead and throw it over that side? Alright. We have a motion to continue and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed name.
Aye.
Madam clerk, do you please call the roll?
Mr. Lydett?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. This will be continued. Dr. Middlebrook, you can say in your motion, I don't believe, but is to the next rating of the medium satisfactory?
Oh, yes, Mr. President.
Alright. Item number nine, resolution fifty-seven eighty-one eighteen. Mr. Ford.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frankie Mercado to execute a pallet and data systems corporation master S.A.A.S. description professional services agreement regarding the acquisition of planned review software.
President, I'm moved for approval, resolution fifty-seven eighty-one eight.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? This is the software that was spoken about Thursday to help builders and developers be able to bring things in a digital format that would allow all departments to look at it at the same time rather than having to go hand to hand to hand. Any comments or questions from the audience? From the council? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed name, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven eighty-two eighteen, Mr. Ford.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frankie Mercado to execute a municipal right-of-way improvement permit and indemnification agreement with express oral change of LLC to use the city's right-of-way for the installation of a four-inch communication phone on South Park Drive.
Moved to approve resolution fifty-seven eighty-two eighteen.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed name, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven eighty-three eighteen, Mr. Ford.
This resolution assents to the vacation of the easement described in this resolution and divests all public rights thereto.
Moved to approve resolution fifty-seven eighty-three eighteen.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed name, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven eighty-four eighteen, Mr. Ford.
This resolution assents to the vacation of the easement described in this resolution and divests all public rights thereto.
Mr. President, I'm moved to approve resolution number fifty-seven eighty-four dash eighteen.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed name, the ayes have it. Next, item twelve, uh, has a late arrival to the budget, I mean, to the agenda. It's a budget amendment, resolution fifty-seven eighty-five eighteen, Mr. Ford.
This resolution amends the budget for fiscal year ending nine-thirty eighteen to provide for the items set forth on the Apache Exhibit Act.
Motion to approve resolution fifty-seven eighty, Bobby.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, uh, one thing I commend this mayor's office and the council on is we came about, we, A, wanted to look at what ways we can add our school system, and one of the categories that we looked at is to, uh, take full ownership from a legislative standpoint of the SRO calls associated with that. Was able to reach out to the mayor this weekend and, uh, following the incident that seems to occur in our city, I mean, our, in our country, and actually was any other opportunities that we could look at. Of course, he was, I've already been talking to Dr. Kathy Murphy on the issue as well too. I don't want to kind of steal anything from, from that, but, uh, he wanted to kind of address what things that he was able to find out and, uh, while, while we're here on this budget, uh, option as well as where is the dollars coming from.
Mr. Rice, perhaps, uh, if there was a, on Thursday's work session, we have a little discussion.
Yes, I'll defer, may I, do you have any comments you want to make, reference to-
Well, just to add on, we, we do, we, we've made every effort, we've made our schools as safe as possible. And I think this council has been very good about, uh, adding resources at the schools, particularly our school resource officers, that's what we're talking about. And during this last budget, we were able to add three more positions. But we still had, we still didn't have one-hundred percent coverage. And I think just in light of the fact of what's gone on the last week, we want to walk away and be comfortable and we've done everything that we can in terms of providing SROs to our schools. And this, this was just a little bit of a hurdle that we needed to jump to do that. And, uh, I'm asking y'all to give that strong consideration tonight.
Mr. Rice, anything you have to add? I understand that this is forty-four thousand dollar adjustment to handle these positions until the end of this fiscal year.
That's exactly right, Mr. President. You'll see the annualized cost is sixty-nine thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars, but because we're in the budget, we, forty-four thousand one twenty-four. And, uh, yeah, the mayor's, I'm going to get bifocals, I know what you're going to say. So, um, the thought process here is that we, we believe based on the excellent work that our department has been doing thus far limiting overtime in the current budget, we believe that this can be funded from our citywide overtime budget, having no transfer or no additional allocation impact. And going into next budget, we're continuing to work with Chief Doris, this may not be the final adjustment that needs to happen. He's asked, and I think it's very reasonable, that we do not discuss in public specific staffing patterns for SROs at the schools. I'm sure that makes sense to everybody. But we're continuing that dialogue with him to be sure that our SRO program is everything it can possibly be. We know we've been recognized as, as the safest school district in Alabama. We know we've been recognized as, as the fifth safest school district in the United States. Those are accolades and we're proud of that. But we can't use those accolades as a reason not to continuously improve and refine security on campus because, I mean, those things mean a lot, but they will not stop an intruder at one of our schools. Only our trained and qualified SROs working in partnership with our school district personnel will keep our kids safe. So we ask for this interim measure. This is absolutely something that was coming in the upcoming budget regardless, and there could be some more adjustments working with our police chief to determine the best safety security picture at our schools.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Murphy, you got something?
Mr. President, I talk out today. Um, there's, there's late adds and then there's really late adds. This is, well, this is one of the latest adds I've ever seen. And usually when we amend the agenda literally in the last hour, it's because of a dire emergency. So I'm curious, what's the emergency, Mr. Rice? I've never seen one added in the last half hour.
Yeah, we don't have an emergency, Mr. Lydett. We, uh, this came to light Thursday, late in the day Thursday. As a thought process, do we continue on with our assessment and analysis and present this in the upcoming budget? Or do we go ahead and pull this up on the calendar? The mayor contacted me late on Thursday and asked me to work with President Smith to determine if it could be added to the agenda. I think we had that conversation sometime Friday morning. I don't recall a specific timeframe. Did a little quick math on the back of an envelope and felt like we could cover it, verify that today, Dr. Lopez, that my numbers were right so that we could give you guys good information. So, not an emergency.
Yeah, it just seems odd that, you know, I walk in here at five-thirty and members of the media are asking me about this item. They seem to know more about it than I do. As the next chairman, is it out of the, out of the question that I should know something about what you're proposing to spend money on more than thirty minutes before I'm asked to make a decision?
No, I, I don't think it's out of the question at all, but I think the question might have to go to the president of the council. We did have that conversation with him on Friday, so this may be an inter-council matter that you guys want to discuss.
Will you contact Mr. Murphy?
I contacted Mr. Murphy Friday night after speaking to you as education chair to be sure that he was aware of this issue. I, quite frankly, it didn't occur to me anything about it from a financial perspective, uh, not, not in terms-
Don't suppose we're spending money, huh?
You know, we got more than just this going on in the city, so, um, you know, I'll tell you what, though, if it's objectionable, bringing, we're, we're still bringing it. We think it's a priority. It's not an emergency, but we do think it's a priority and we don't think it's anything that we should, uh, should wait until October first. We're aware of the public sentiment on this matter. We're aware that many of you, as well as the mayor's office, as well as Dr. Murphy's office, have been contacted by very concerned parents at the end of last week. And that was what drove the thought process to say, well, are we waiting around till October one to get where we really believe we need to be? Or do we see if the council would entertain it on Monday night? So it's there for your pleasure.
Mr. Murphy?
I'll get way down.
Dr. Lopez. I understand from a conversation on Friday that, that this is going to be funded if it passes, um, which I'm very favorable of passing. Just want to make sure everything is dealt appropriately, it's coming out of citywide overtime. Citywide overtime has taken a pretty good hit, especially in this year's budget where it was cut more than any department that's really talked about it recently. Can the city really afford to cut overtime anymore unless this should come out of reserves instead?
Well, let's, uh, this proposed amendment actually has it coming out of reserves, but I think what Mr. Rice is referring to, we, we do not plan to have to make this transfer for changes in what we think overtime will actually happen and changes that we've made recently and some changes. So I think that's what it is. The amendment does have a transfer vested, but we do not anticipate having to make it.
Okay, so this is actually coming out of reserves and not overtime, unless it can be dealt with that way?
On the amendment, yes.
Okay, thank you. I've got a question for Chief Doris. Unless anybody has anything else for Mr. Rice.
Mr. President, I have a, I have a comment to make. Fully support this. We have two members of the Board of Education here, Kurt and Deanna. We've always promised you that we would be a good partner with you and working with you for things that are beneficial for the city and its people and the school board. And I too had a call today about this from a parent and think that it is worth, well worthwhile to transfer this money and allocate it to this matter.
Chief, I've been told that what I'm getting ready to ask you probably isn't fair, but my wife tells me I'm not fair most of the time anyway. Looking at the cost of this versus the cost of a regular full-time commissioned police officer, I know that that officer would work a forty-hour week rather than the ten fifty-eight hours. Is there anything that a full-time position would bring to the table that, that a number of reserve officers could not? And if it's something that you don't think it should be discussed at this time, I would respect your views.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say that I've had that, uh, discussion, uh, over the weekend and again today with, uh, Mr. Rice and, uh, conclusion that, uh, I'm good with the, uh, with the two reserve tonight, but I would, uh, I would ask you to all keep an open mind when it comes to, uh, uh, the new budget coming in October because I'll probably be, uh, be talking about it again. But I will say I want to thank mayor, council, if this gets approved. We do everything we can obviously to, uh, to keep our schools safe. They do a great job. We've got great people working, it's a true partnership. And also want you to know that, uh, if you look nationally, there aren't a lot of school districts that fund SROs in elementary schools. The high school last week in, uh, in Florida, the SRO deputy sheriff not only takes care of that high school, but also middle school that's on that forty-five acre campus. So again, what we do is not something that's the norm nationally. And I'm very proud to say that, uh, that you all and the mayor is very, very supportive. So again, uh, we get the funds to adequately support, what I would say adequate support, where we need to be right now through this budget year. But again, I may be back here, uh, in October.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Dr. Middlebrooks? I'd just like to add, um, as a faculty at one of our schools, I want to thank the mayor and chief. I know I feel safer having SROs in my workplace. Uh, I'm glad that, I hope that we get to one-hundred percent coverage at all our schools. I know I feel safer having the SROs where my children go. And I know the, the officer at Rocky Ridge, John Audrey, he, it goes way beyond just the safety of the schools. He's, he's basically a diplomat for the police department. These kids interact with those police officers on a daily basis. They, you know, they trust them, they learn to trust them. And my kids know if they have any trouble, they're going to seek out a police officer. So I, I commend, commend the whole city for the dedication.
President, just for clarification, Dr. Middlebrook's comment, if approved, this would put us over one-hundred percent coverage, which would give us a cushion when an SRO has to be away from a campus for whatever reason?
I don't know if everyone was able to see the photo that went viral, I believe it was last year, chief, uh, showing the, the, uh, the back of a SRO leaning a very, very young child by the hands. He looked like he was about six and a half feet tall, I think he was like he was about two. And the message that that sent to everybody that saw it was just amazing. Uh, any comments or questions from the, from the audience? Any additional from the council? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed name, the ayes have it.
Yes, one comment. Firstly, I, again, I commend the city and the council for, for moving forward on this. Also, I've had the opportunity to talk to Dr. Murphy, president of the school board. One thing, uh, to, uh, we continually need to say is have collaboration between the city and the schools. I know in the front part of two thousand seventeen, we had a work session, including my seat of the education chair, uh, city leadership, uh, members of, of the school board, et cetera. And, uh, after talking to Dr. Murphy, we're looking at over the next couple of weeks or so, developing a, another workshop, uh, work session between those two entities as well, uh, to talk about other things we can do as far as safety. Uh, of course, we cannot get in the weeds about everything that happens in red and yellow code, things of that nature, uh, but other opportunities for both entities kind of collaborate together on protecting, uh, our city, not because of awards, but because, uh, we pray that that day doesn't come, but, uh, we want to make sure we're prepared every step of the way to protect our, our kids.
Thank you, sir. Resolution fifty-seven eighty-six eighteen, Mr. Ford.
This resolution authorizes the city administrator to negotiate and set up workers' compensation against plans for, against the city. According to the Alabama Workers' Compensation Law, with the approval of the city council president and county chairman, the city administrator is authorized to execute any documents necessary to implement, to have the city.
Moved to approve resolution fifty-seven eighty-six sixteen.
We have a motion and a second.
Eighteen. Sorry, thank you.
Something that I brought up to Mr. Rice right before the meeting and he thought the other one was like, this is a tap out.
Yes.
I'll just, but, uh, I'm wondering whether or not it would be proper to add pro temp to the list and then any two of the three, just in case, uh, either the chair or the finance chair is out of pocket and unavailable, uh, add a pro temp and then any two of the three would be able to make that decision. Just calling that out for a possible discussion. Any other comments or questions from the council? From the audience? More from the council? Seeing and hearing none? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed name, the ayes have it. Next, we have first readings for two ordinances. First reading, eighteen dash twenty-three fifty-nine. It's my understanding that the mayor's office would like to continue this for two weeks. mayor's office would like to continue this for two weeks. If so, perhaps we could get a motion to continue.
I can just ask a point of clarification, it's only a first reading, we're not voting for another two weeks, and naturally it's continued already for two weeks.
I think they wanted to continue the first reading.
Continue the first reading.
Any changes required on the first reading?
I was born a clarification, would you, would you withdraw it and then resubmit a first reading?
We, we wanted to avoid a situation where it's read in this version and then had to be reread for the first time, so however we get to that is fine. We anticipate change.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. President, would you allow me to, well, just make a motion to withdraw ordinance eighteen dash twenty-three fifty-nine?
Second. No motion, second. Any comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay, the ayes have it. Next, we have first reading of ordinance eighteen dash twenty-three sixty.
Mr. Corley. This ordinance provides that a home occupation may be conducted as it was permitted principally in residential zoning districts only following completion of an application by the requested review and approval of such application by the building official or his designated, complies with the requirements established in this ordinance. This modifies the current municipal code which classifies a home occupation as a conditional use. This ordinance provides that daycare home centers, group daycare centers, and light care facility home centers, as defined in the ordinance, may operate within residential zoning districts as a conditional use, as currently allowed by existing zoning regulations pending compliance with the requirements established in this ordinance.
The second reading and consideration for adoption would be Monday, March fifth. Mr. Shaw and I had some conversation today and just for discussion point, was wondering whether or not anybody running a retail type business, that would play sales tax, uh, would not be permitted under this ordinance? If, whether there's any value there?
Yeah, yes, sir. If enacted, we would go through a traditional business licensure process for those home-based businesses that are allowable and they would be subject to the remittance of sales tax for the city. Now, and the reason I hesitate is the entire online SSUT process that we're dealing with at the state level. And I believe that even under those proposed modifications, we would still be able to collect physical sales tax here for transactions that were made in the city.
Piano lessons, car lessons, voice lessons?
I don't, I don't know for sure that those are subject, but whatever would be subject to sales tax would.
Only two, though, that I can think of that probably should be included instead of excluded. Could be those that sell cosmetics like Mary Kay or Amway or Herbalife.
We have to dig into that because that actually could be a wholesale transaction. So we'd have to find out the specifics of that, is whether or not local sales tax even applies.
Tonight, this first reading, I was just calling that out.
One quick point of information, if I could, there's been a lot of confusion about this, and we've tried to clarify where possible. This does not specifically preclude any type of home-based business and explain how that works. This would give administrative authority to staff to issue a business license for home-based occupations that are incidental to the use as a dwelling. So if you don't have any outward signs that you're running a business, you're a consultant, you're a writer, an editor, et cetera, you don't have visitors, you don't have traffic, noise, hazardous materials, et cetera, you would automatically be able to be granted a license. We have a large number of those in pending backlog that we'd like to deal with. We'd like to license those people to do what they're proposing to do. If you had anything that could be potentially hazardous, noxious, or objectionable to the community, you still could get a license. You would just have to come through an appeal process, probably to the Code Appeals Board, and be heard by that body. The staff would not have the authority to issue that, but the reason we want to put it through a deliberative body is then the public gets notice. And then they could come, much like our P and Z, VCA process, they could be notified of what's being proposed, and they could speak on it in public prior to that body granting or denying the action.
What about someone who's renting a room to a college student that's there for six months or a year?
Your commingling ordinance is called.
Not really, because the others, this is not included in that.
Right.
That's business model.
You know, that's probably going to be covered in the changes that we predict will come back to that short-term rent ordinance. I think, I think the answer to your question would lie in those possible changes.
Anything else from the council?
I just have one of those questions. Can somebody answer, I know this is the first reading, but getting all the way down the road, if you could answer this now. Things like, um, we talked about the arts and supporting the arts, piano lessons, voice lessons, violin lessons, art lessons. Um, uh, Mr. Schultz brought up something on, on an email that no patrons are allowed to be onsite at these businesses. How would those type businesses, would those businesses be denied? They couldn't, they couldn't do business in the city, um, based on the way this ordinance is written?
Great question. They would, they would not be subject to automatic administrative licensure, so Mr. Lopez's office could not instantly grant them a license, but they would have the ability to come to the body, whether that's for the appeal, uh, Code Appeals or the council. And our assumption is you probably want to handle it with the Code Appeals Board, uh, and they would be able to petition for licensure. So they're not ruled out, they just wouldn't make that automatic approval level at staff.
Because, uh, I, I, my mom's a voice teacher, she's taught thousands of, of people out of her home, and my brother is employed because he took drumming lessons at, at a home. So I, I just hope that we, we're very cautious and we're cognizant that these are important parts of our community.
Absolutely.
Businesses, we make sure that there is a, a reliable and method for them to do business and that we're not just sending a whole cottage industry out and really hurting our community in itself.
And my speculation, speculation only, is that anybody that, or anybody that heard that kind of a request would grant it. We, I'll give you one quick example. The complaint we have, a construction company being run out of a home, the entire backyard was paved, it became a lot for vehicles and equipment and material. We're pretty sure that a court, code body would probably deny that one based on.
Well, and small mom students probably would have generated some complaints too from the, the noise pollution and everything. I'm not talking about that, the chemicals and things like that. I'm just talking about, you know, home-based businesses that really are a critical part of the community, making sure that they're supported.
That are not noxious to their neighbors.
Right, right.
Exactly.
Shaw, your brothers still play for kids?
Not anymore.
Anything from the audience? Comments, questions from the audience?
President asked one question yesterday, was supposed. We talked a little bit today about the, uh, the, the vehicles that can be kept, you know, in there and, and the sightlines with those. You know, one of the complaints I get a lot is from one guy, honestly, but there's, the guy owns a, a business, essentially taking business and he parks the vehicles all over the front of the house and the side of the house, and it's a big billboard for his business. It's been some thought in maybe saying that you can't have those vehicles up front of the house, that can drive ways, some kind of regulation there to, to keep those calls from coming, because there's no signage allowable, but.
Correct.
A truck with a, with a graphic on the side is just as good as any sign as you know.
That's right. Um, and so, and, and after receiving your question, I discussed that with Mr. Ryan. What we would propose is it be scoped such that one incidental vehicle, so that if the individual just happens to be a plumber and he drives a van to work and it has the name of the company on the side, he could park that vehicle in his driveway at his home. If it became a fleet or multiple vehicles, that would not be allowable. Um, you know, quite frankly, we have City Hoover employees who various points in time being on call, et cetera, they take home the vehicle that says City Hoover, it's incidental to their employment. So we would not want it to be done in a fleet storage way or an advertising way, but if that just happens to be the vehicle you bring home, it's clearly we don't want to impede that.
That's fair. Mr. Rice, if you want to go ahead and deal with that now rather than later, the property maintenance ordinance speaks to that specifically about commercial vehicles on, uh, on personal dwellings. Anything else from the council? From the audience? Mr. Schultz?
I'm Robin Schultz, three forty-eight Albemarle Drive. And over the, since Thursday when this first came out, there's been a lot of talk about this online, obviously, about this, that, and the other as far as type of business. So my question is going to be this. As it is written right now, it's going to be very difficult for some businesses to be able to conform to the, uh, to the rules. This, Mr. Shaw, uh, brought up the music key. The occasional person that comes to visit, as the ordinance is written right now, that's not allowed. As the ordinance is written right now, is that what is going to be voted on or is it going to be amended for certain things? And I, I guess, Mr. President, that would go, that question would go to Mr. Rice.
Uh, it'd be good, but as I understand it, as I said earlier, that if any changes were to occur, we'd have to have another first reading. What is before us is what we will be voting on in two weeks. If any changes are made, then another first reading would be required.
So at this time, it becomes a little problematic if it is approved as it is for certain small businesses.
Good.
Then how would, and then, so then the, the matter of enforcement would come in, into then, as it is written at this point?
Yes, sir.
Um, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Bennett.
Don Bennett.
Oh, and the microphone, they got to be able to hear you at home here on YouTube.
City Council Mayor, uh, Don Bennett, I live eleven twenty-five Shades Crest Road. I just wanted to add a couple of things about home businesses that historically have happened to. I moved to Hoover in the early nineties and joined a church called Discovery Native Church. We started in Reston Woods in the house. We had thirty people there, our relatives. That church has been really well, I don't bother to forget. Ted Scan started in Hoover and it grew to two hundred employees, sold for fifteen million, occupied the eighth floor of the Galleria Tower. So it started as a pure business for residents. One domain started on Park Avenue in my house, moved to Tana Road in the bedroom. We had forty-four employees and sold for eighteen million. These kind of businesses are facilitated by technology. I hate that this ordinance, if you have to have residents only be a part of the business, kill all business starting with them. These businesses don't stay in houses. They grow, they move to commercial areas, it's the way they should. And we stayed in Hoover because we started. If we can't start in Hoover, I think they'll just go south to the Ha Ha Bum or incorporated Jefferson County. So I would like to appeal to the business logic, need mining, this is bound to mine. Let these little businesses start, they'll take care of themselves. We don't want parking lots and backyards, obviously, but we do want our ownership of Hoover always represented to me as well when I lived here. And I just would, uh, put that history there.
Thank you for that valuable information. I think, uh, was it Bill Gates started this one?
That was, uh, Steve Jobs.
Jobs, okay.
He could do that under this ordinance.
Well, he could, but he might have to go to the appeals board, and I want to restate this for clarification. This does not prohibit anything Mr. Schultz has asked about or that Mr. Bennett has referred to. We actually want to facilitate that. Right now, we have to tell all applicants no. We have to do that because it's covered under zoning. If this passes, we could tell a lot of people automatically yes, and we could tell the remaining applicant pool, you just need to go to this board so your neighbors get notice of what you propose to do, and you have to go to a second step just to be heard. So this is not a no to anybody, this is a yes to a lot of people, and let's go to the second step to see if we can get you a yes for the remainder.
Very good. I appreciate it.
Something quick, what has been said, a lot of people don't look at YouTube nor come to, uh, city council meetings, uh, how can we get this information? But, because you just said, stated that currently it's known to everyone now, but this is kind of cleaning up, allowing a great deal of people a yes, and then some folks have to come back before another board. If, if passed in a second reading, for not to be a shock to a ton of people, fourteen thousand kids, a lot of folks taking piano and saxophone and everything else lessons now, uh, how can we get this out to our community upfront first? Uh, is it anything we can work with the schools? Uh, I know how many people, I mean, nothing against YouTube, but I mean, YouTube, thirteen?
Seven, yeah, but I think we've got three cameras in the fire. John Anderson, yeah, John Anderson, maybe the mayor would want to make a comment, or perhaps even the economy chair, economic chair would want to say something.
I think, Mr. Murphy, we have to use our traditional communications channels. We are fortunate enough to have some coverage here tonight, which will certainly help. You know, we've talked about putting out a special post from the city's Facebook page specific to trying to clarify this. We've tried to be on some of the forums, interacting. I don't know that we're, I think there was some, and this happens with communications, I think there was some preconceived ideas about what this might do, and we've been trying to answer those questions and assure them that it's not a denial for anybody. Right now, we're in denial of it because we have to be. We're actually trying to open a portal for home-based businesses to exist.
Well, we're, Mr. President, this has kind of come up in, Murphy's questions have come up in some of the technology, there's various business groups and, and that are there to facilitate starting businesses, and they've asked me several times if somebody's going to start a tech company in Hoover, who do they talk to? Um, I think developing a toolkit or some, some sort of, whether it be a webpage or a folder or something like, hey, you want to start a business in Hoover? Here's what you did, or, or the digital format or whatever. Uh, and there are companies out there that have a pipeline for that, that, that look for those things and match, uh, potential businesses like Mr. Bennett said and, and those things. So there's a lot, it's just a matter of forwarding and getting materials on there.
Oh, I understand you have to seven rings and you go through the door like we do to get a happy one. Anything else? I want to thank everyone for the information. I think it's very valid, and I think Mr. Rice makes some very good points that, that there is an appeal process, we've just got to make sure that the appeal doesn't take so long with the people who sent us. Item fifteen is an ABC application, retail beer on and off premises, retail table wine on and off premises, or a sushi, or any new businesses, O Sushi Hoover. Okay, fifty-five nineteen Grove Boulevard, suite one oh one. This is a change in ownership on a previously approved site.
Mr. President, I move to approve the application for O Sushi Hoover?
Second. Motion and a second. Is there not a secondary vote along with this? This is, is this the license or a conditional use?
No, this is, this is the note.
Have you slipped through the sign? But it had already had conditionings approved, I think.
Very good, very good.
I'll, yeah, any comments or questions from anybody? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay, the ayes have it. Mr. Lydon?
Sir, got a couple of bills.
Take the bills.
Mr. President, I have reviewed the bills, and I would move that they be paid in full, as presented.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay, the ayes have it. Comments or questions?
One quick comment that was made Thursday, uh, education, board education, uh, application will be out on the way up today. I think, uh, Margie, have, have you already, is already up there? Yeah, okay, I sure did. Good memory. Following that, just some quick dates, the twelfth will be the end of the deadline for those applications at five P M. Um, March nineteenth will be the interview process for whoever applies, and then April second, and all is tentative now, April second will be a five-thirty committee meeting prior to that, the regular council meeting, and then, uh, we will possibly pull a vote on that new person. Let's say May, April second, I mean, will be the day of possible, that person, April second. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Rice, you'd sent, you'd sent an email out Friday. Oh, wait a minute. We'll, we'll get right to you, sir. Mr. Matthews, right?
No, sir.
No? There you go. You had sent an email on Friday asking for clarification, uh, publicly, not in front of God and everybody.
I don't know that that was the wording. I think Mr. Lydon handled it earlier. Yes, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you, sir. Any comments or questions from the audience? Yes, sir, come on down. Yes, sir, come on down.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, members of council, good evening. My name is Ronald Wilson Jackson. I'm executive director of Citizens for Better Schools and Sustainable Community. We're a statewide school improvement organization based in Birmingham, Alabama. And my first appearance over here, I do want to say I appreciate the apparent openness that you have. We wish my city, we could have the opportunity, and you have extended, to receive questions from the public. Transparency is extremely important in government.
I do.
We think that sunshine is best disinfectant for government. And we also know that the education is the fuel that drives economies anywhere in the world. Hoover is to be commended for the rapid pace to which it has grown, just fifty short years. And I want to say to you now that in terms of the metropolitan area of Jefferson Shelby Children, you're showing the way how growth can be attained. Remember how you created your Board of Education? Mayor Skinner, I believe it was, had to take the political risk of creating this school board. Something tells me in the back of that mind was that if this city could not have an effective, efficient education system, that newly birthed city would probably die. With that said, I'm here today to ask who I now believe is the economic leader in our metropolitan area, and that is the city of Hoover. To sort of turn the paradigm around a little bit. The University of Alabama at Birmingham, the Business Alliance are seeking to build an outdoor open stadium for football. Hoover made a choice, you talked about priority earlier, to invest in the education. I won't go off into the part that we want to talk about, but I want to ask the Hoover right now to do some metropolitan leadership. City of Birmingham is strapped for cash. Our schools are failing. We have too many on our failings, yet some leaders are asking us to put recreation and entertainment over education. Citizens for Better Schools and Sustainable Communities think that's a misplaced priority and it's a misplaced paradigm. Accordingly, I'd like to ask Hoover, since the Business Alliance says that this football stadium for Birmingham Jefferson City, in no time it's going to Jefferson County. They helped them fund it through this instrumentality that they have called the civic center. And I don't know if Hoover has a tax increment finance district, do you have a TIF at all? Well, that's another instrumentality I want to create, to help fund, it's a special taxing district. But I want to ask Hoover, because the athletic director of the city, not the city, but U A B said that this baseball stadium would be an economic development jumpstart. But has anyone from U A B asked the city of Hoover for any money for this baseball stadium?
I don't know if anybody on the council has been contacted, Mr. Mayor, no.
Well, I think you know the point I was driving home. If this truly is going to be an economic driver for the metropolitan area, I don't hold a public office, but Franklin Delano Roosevelt said that the greatest office in a democracy is that of citizen. And that it is the duty of the citizen to keep government from falling into error. Birmingham reached out and helped the state of Alabama when Mercedes, the very first big economic driver came. Spent our money. I'm not going to talk about the woes we have right now. But it's time for the tables to be turned and the paradigm right. We need a financial self-help board. If this is truly an authentic economic driver, I'm calling on every mayor in Jefferson County, every council in Jefferson County to step up. I'm gonna wrap up now and simply say this. If the state of Alabama, which by extension owns the University of Alabama system and subsumed as the University of Alabama at Birmingham, if the board of trustees of the University of Alabama doesn't want to fund football as a few years ago, was terminated because they were running up deficits, and now they want almost two hundred million dollars out of a city like Birmingham that can't even staff enough patrols to drive down crime, I'm going to tell you something. Malcolm X said it best, when you live in a poor neighborhood, you're living in the area where you have to have crimes. Because if you have poor schools, you have a poor education. Poor education, maybe you can get a poor bean job. That poor bean job, maybe you can live again. In a poor neighborhood, it's a very vicious cycle. When is Alabama going to right itself? Hoover is generous to its schools from local funding. I think every superintendent around will tell you that the state of Alabama is defaulting on its primary obligation to fund its public school system. Now is not the time for the municipalities of Jefferson County to be talking about funding a football program when they can't even fill up basketball arena. Deficits, or if y'all talking about the special things you're gonna have to do? Where else is feasibility studies? I hope they have read the N C A A reports on how much universities have to subsidize many of these programs, unlike some people think. Most of these colleges are not money makers. They don't have a green thumb or the modest touch to fund those programs. So with that said, if it's gonna be, we need municipal help. So I've encouraged my mayor, my council, not to go down that route. If we have money, let's invest in our neighborhoods. More importantly, let's invest in Birmingham City Schools where all but one of our high schools are on the failings. I want to thank you for your time, the opportunity to speak with you. And we'll be back again. Once again, I think the paradigm has changed as a new metropolitan leader in Jefferson County, in the metropolitan area. Ask Hoover, if you could take your paradigm, and you all, Mr. Mayor, you were courageous when you said, we're gonna invest in our schools. Thank you very much for putting education ahead of recreation and entertainment. Thank you.
Mr. Jackson, do you think Birmingham would like the Andersons?
Well, I think that the way you're growing on the continuum, it may just happen. In fact, what I encourage is that we create one great county. Merge all these school systems together. We can bring greater cost efficiencies and we don't have to worry about, in a sense, even though we have to worry about within school segregation discrimination. We could really have a truly unitary school system if we merged all of these, what is it, about eleven different school systems in Jefferson County now? Let's merge them all and let's have one great school system. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Singer, you want to come down? No? Or do you want to? Yes, sir, come down. Please provide your name and address.
And, but, my name is Dennis Price. I'm a resident, long-term resident at River Chase, twenty-one, twenty-one Bailey Brook Court, along with my wife, Robin. I need to move closer to this. And by the way, I'm an insulin-divided diabetic, so to put everyone in comfort, that's a blood sugar monitor, not a handgun. And because I'm an insulin-divided diabetic and I came here instead of eating my usual mealtime, this is a Rice Krispy Square, not a pistol, I don't want that in my pocket. I grew up in Tuscaloosa County, first moved to Hoover in nineteen eighty-two at my graduation with an accounting degree. My wife, Robin, I met her at the old Arthur Young Accounting Firm. She's a C P A and accountant as well. She's lived in Hoover her entire lifetime. Her family lived here in Hoover. Her maiden name was McKinney. Some of you oldsters may remember her father, he's deceased now. Very active in the community, Buff Park United Methodist Church. And he was president of the Jefferson County Personnel Board for a long period of time, hiring McKinney. But anyway, since moving to Hoover, I have loved Hoover, never had any desire to move back to Tuscaloosa. And couldn't get my wife to, but she's an Auburn graduate, if I tried to. But I'm really here today to offer some comments on the withdrawn ordinance, the air, well, the short-term rental ordinance, or what many people refer to as the Airbnb ordinance. Forgive my informality, John and I traded some emails with you, the rest of you I didn't speak with. Some of you may have seen my face, and it's one reason I wanted to come tonight. On ABC thirty-three forty, there was a, Lauren Walsh, I guess, did a bit piece on strangers in the neighborhood. In all honesty, I had no advance warning, I was painting my dining room, I hadn't shaved in three days. She knocked on the door, then she wanted me on camera, and I had ten minutes because she had an appointment to meet the mayor. She wouldn't give me time to shave, she gave me time to go put on a different shirt. So I shaved today and we're done, water and soup. I'm here, let me say from the standpoint that my situation with short-term rentals, Airbnb, is taken care of. I'm a little concerned that my neighbor's house was pictured in the story because the investors, as I will speak to, sold the house when they found out that they were not going to be allowed to do what they were doing. And I now have a wonderful new neighbor, mother and children. And so I want to be absolutely clear. And I was very pleased with the city, couldn't be more pleased with the city of Hoover, specifically the mayor's office, the zoning department, the zoning enforcement officer, and members of the city council that I contacted. They worked with me very quickly to take care of the situation. Now, I understand that there was some discussion and issues about why do we need to do anything because you were able to handle this situation very easily? Let me just describe to you what happened. And just as a little background, so you understand what was my hot button. Twenty-one, twenty-one Bailey Brook Court is in what I refer to as the starter section of River Chase. It's in the dividing ridge section. It's not one of the five-hundred-thousand-dollar homes. The Airbnb home, actually, when it's sold to the new purchaser, sold for around two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. So, you know, it's a nice, it's a nice home. My wife and I are very pleased, love the neighborhood. It's a very small cul-de-sac. So you know what a cul-de-sac is? It's like the end of a key, circle head, okay? There are six driveways that come out from the houses onto that very small cul-de-sac. There's actually seven houses on the cul-de-sac in the entry road. One of the houses, the seventh house, their driveway, fortunately for them, goes out onto dividing ridge, the road that is not the really road leading into the cul-de-sac. The lots are small, they're pie-shaped. The shape of the cul-de-sac is sloped downward. My house and the house that became the Airbnb home are in the middle of the bottom of the cul-de-sac. We are the only homes that have any street frontage. It is not much. I have approximately twelve to fifteen feet of street frontage. The Airbnb home had twelve to fifteen feet of street frontage. I have three driveways that basically stacked and butt up to my driveway where, when the subdivision plant was made, they gave them about two feet of street frontage, so that they would have somewhere to put their garbage can, basically. Nobody can park there. Parking is an issue for us. It's an issue amongst us neighbors. My driveway, because of the topography of the land, is steeply sloped. And there's a storm drain right in the middle. There's a storm drain eastward in the middle between my property and the neighbor's property. And the gutter, we don't have curbs, we have gutters in the cul-de-sac. To keep the water that's rushing down the cul-de-sac from just turning my driveway into a spillway, the water's intended to stay in the gutter and come around and go into the storm drain, which is on our property. So I park, my wife and I park at our garage. We have two cars and we've never parked out on the street. To exit our property, though, we have to exit, our driveway is angled and it's up like that, very steep. You can't see the road or the driveway in front of you because you're looking up as you come out of the driveway. And the edge of the drive has a lip, and I say, gentlemen, ladies, watch, I'm going to move very quickly, but this is all very relevant. Has a lip to keep the water in the gutter. Unless we pull directly out very slowly of our driveway, our cars drag. We can't come down the cul-de-sac and then my driveway's like this and it drop off and curb down. My wife drives a low little snow, it will drag down. Parking is my hot button. Now I'll move on to the Airbnb and it will become relevant. We've lived there twenty-four years. The only people that lived longer were the people next to me who sold to the folks who became Airbnb investors. We've known these people for many years and so we talked to them all along the way. Upfront, I didn't know anything. I knew they were selling their home, hated to see them go, they were moving because he broke his leg due to the topography in the yard and was older, in his sixties, and they were looking for a more friendly home. They stayed in Hoover, by the way, definitely wanted to stay in Hoover. They told us a young couple had bought the home and the wife was pregnant and they were gonna have a child. And we were very ecstatic, my wife and I, and the other neighbors were looking forward to welcoming the new neighbors into the neighborhood. The closing occurred. Nobody moved in. Nobody was there during the day. What happened, we would see at the end of workdays, there would be lights on in the residence. There were lots of deliveries by U P S and FedEx. And they would be carrying boxes in. And lots of times they'd be unloading in my yard just due to the limited area, a big truck. I'm gonna, I'm gonna move along because I know what's important. Basically, the young couple had bought and never intended to move into the residence and live a single night. I looked for a moving van, they were locals, they lived down somewhere south of Pelton. They have a very nice house that they're happy with. They have local employment. They purchased the home, which I didn't know at the time, as an investor. What they were doing, after they finished their day jobs, they had ordered furniture appropriate to say an inn and were totally using their time to assemble furniture in the evenings. About a month or two months after the closing, cars started showing up in our cul-de-sac and taking up what limited parking there were, interfering with my getting out of my driveway. My immediate reaction was, I wanted to go over and ask them to please note that they were interfering with my access to my driveway and move it. My wife said, no, no, you know, these are gonna be our new neighbors. These are gonna be our new neighbors. So please, we want to get off to the right foot, let's be patient with them, you know, surely this is all just moving in. That went on for a while. I was never able to get anyone to a door, never able to introduce myself to my new neighbors. Then what happened, it didn't take long to notice, over a matter of a couple of weeks, the cars aren't the same cars. The cul-de-sac is filling up. Now originally, my wife was, well, you know, this young couple, they're expecting a baby, they may have out-of-town relatives and parents, they're inviting them to see their new home and stay there. Don't, you know, let's be patient because they're gonna be our neighbors. So I was patient. Now, my wife was still working, she just retired. Now, my wife was still working, she just retired. She went to work one Monday morning, I opened my front door, the cul-de-sac was full of cars, I'm talking about, you know, and there's only room for like two cars on the street, they were parked in front of everybody's house all the way up the road. And they were obviously going in and out of that house, and my wife was not there, and I said to myself, by God, I'm going to find out what is going on. I went over, people were in the house, I knocked on the door, no one would answer the door, and I was frustrated. But, and I'm also a courteous person who respects other people's property. So I walked back, walked out their sidewalk, rather than cutting across our yards, go their driveway, and I noticed that there's a BMW in the car with tinted windows, but I noticed, it's running, there's somebody in that car. So I grabbed on the window, and the gentleman rolled the window down, and I extended my hand and said, hey, I've been looking to meet my neighbor. And he looked at me like I was crazy. And I said, I want to meet my new neighbor, I wouldn't go away. And he said, sir, you don't understand, we found this place on internet, it was a foreign national, and I've got nothing wrong with that, I would have been happy for him to be my neighbor, but, sir, we rented this place for a wedding party, and we will be leaving after the wedding, the wedding is so-and-so. But as soon as he said, we found this place for rent on the internet, I finally, duh, got the message. Now, I feel like a chump, I'm trying to be polite and patient with a new neighbor and wanting to welcome a new neighbor, and I'm finding out, when I go in and I get on Airbnb, and I see that there's a site for the home and has been, and that all these people that have been coming and going have been prior guests, and they have been writing testimonials, and I mean, it's a whole business that's been going on. And let me state this, I've never used Airbnb, I started looking at the Airbnb website, familiarizing myself with it. They use it as a marketing tool, a payment tool, et cetera. And council, I think you should, you should follow this, you should think about this, Airbnb lays out for someone that wants to market a property and use their services, they lay out what should be done. And they require that when you list your property and you execute the document, that you attest that you have done the following three things, and they have educational materials, and they know that this varies across the nation, you need to talk to people, get a lawyer if you need to. You're supposed to talk to the people at the zoning department to see that what you are doing is in compliance with local zoning. Did these people talk to anybody at the zoning office? No. For a neighborhood that is coveted and has a neighborhood association, they are told you need to talk to the officers representatives of the neighborhood association. You need to make sure that what you're doing is going to be in compliance with the neighborhood association guidelines. Did they talk to the neighborhood association? No. Then, here's where I'm the chump, they are explicitly told, you need to talk to the neighbors in the immediate surrounding neighborhood, it's our good neighbor policy, and get them comfortable with what you are going to be doing with the residents. Did they do that? No. I called San Francisco, the headquarters of Airbnb, and asked for their legal department. I wanted to make sure that they knew that these people were not compliant with the requirements of their own leasing agreement. Now, in reality, it's very hard to find a telephone number, Airbnb does not really want to be contacted. They show no interest whatsoever, that's boilerplate language, it appears, to protect Airbnb and for them to be able to say that they're doing the right thing. Now, I'll tell you my practical issues, and I'm not just a nut that's against everything, and it is a very difficult issue. But first let me say why it was easy, from my understanding, for the city to deal with at the zoning department. In addition to the fact that they didn't do what they were supposed to according to Airbnb, well, that's their contractual issue, is it's owned, single-family residence. Somebody, by God, you know, I hope that we haven't moved this far away because of technology, somebody is supposed to be using the residence as their family, single-family residence, that is the primary purpose of that residence, a single-family residence, as I understand it, would have to be, as a family residence. The owners that bought it never spent one night there, they never intended to use it as a residence, it was purchased, it was immediately put on Airbnb, marketed on a night-to-night basis. Now, the whole thing astounded me, it has astounded me that anybody would want to rent the place next door to me. Yeah, especially to me, right? But let me say that it was booked solid, it booked solid, and let me explain to you what was going on, and concerns, okay? Well, there are many concerns, security concerns. One of my neighbors, my wife and I do not have children, but several of the families have 10-year-olds, even five to 10-year-olds. It's been a quiet, peaceful cul-de-sac, it's not a through road. The parents don't feel like they have to watch their children play in the cul-de-sac. But after they realize that, gosh, the cul-de-sac is filling up with cars from all over America, nobody knows who they are, then we don't feel the same way about any, and time, you cut me off any time?
Sure, I'm going to eat that, because I could-
I think that we didn't hit the golden buzzer. You guys done an excellent job of explaining your issues, your position.
Well, let me give two more, and then I will voluntarily, I'm more than happy to sit down, okay?
Fifteen seconds for two hours.
Fifteen seconds. Safety, nuisance, turn around, walk down from my mailbox, okay? And over not guests that know where the very small property line is, people would say, there was a large group, a large group there for a cemetery, for someone that had died from out-of-town. They're standing in my shrub beds right at the corner of my house, looking sad, and then calling me over and wanting to talk to me about the death of their relative. My home is my refuge, I'm a nice guy, I'm sorry for the loss of your relative, I don't expect to have to talk to people in my yard, complete strangers, about the death of a relative. I expect to leave my driveway, anytime I want to leave my driveway without having to go find somebody to ask them to please let me out of my driveway.
Price, if there's anything that remains unsaid, I would like, maybe you could email all of us?
Again, I do appreciate it, but, hey, realize the realities of short-term rental.
Anything else from the audience? One announcement I'd like to make is I am creating a committee on renovation, it will be a committee of the whole, I will chair, Mr. Lido will be vice chair. And under state laws, the city council is responsible for property and buildings of the city, so we just want to make sure that we don't let our responsibility get away from us. So, anything else? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Seconds.
I got to move. Move in a second. You got a second? All in favor, if you go on.